Go ahead and just start counting the bags.
Oh, yeah, I thought bag.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, and at this time, if everybody would, please stand for the indication. Left and flat. Ms. Hollerworth?
Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for all the things you've done for us. We want to pray for all of our soldiers overseas, and pray for everybody in this room, and pray for our commission to make the right decisions. There's been some deaths lately. I'm not going to call everybody, but I want to pray for all those families, and just thank you for letting us exist in your world. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Powell, looks like you're front and center to start off the show today.
It is.
Okay, so it's the first item, the computation of the year-end funds.
Pass these down. It's going to be on their screen.
Yes.
It's going to be on their screen, but we're also passing out the hard.
Great, okay, okay. I mean, but the first item is the computation of excess fund balance.
That's what we just passed out.
Right, okay. So, as the board has asked me over the last several years, is to compute what the excess fund balances were as of 9/30/24, the last full fiscal year. You have a fund balance policy that says 30% of expenditures should be retained in reserves. Anything extra is to be appropriated by the board. So, I did the computation as I always did, and overall, the excess fund balances were about $22 million. There are a number of them, including economic development, tourist development, library enhancement, that aren't available for general expenditures. So, the three that are available is the general fund rounded off. There's $9 million. Transportation trust, $3.5 million. Municipal services, $1.4 million. The total is $13,900,000. And so, just to quickly, I guess, refresh everyone on how you have excess fund balances. You do it two ways. One is that you accurately estimate revenues. By statute, you deduct 5%. And so, if you accurately computed them, that 5% goes to reserves. And so, the 5% is roughly probably four and a half million of that of that total, about 40%. The other is funds that were appropriated but were not expended during the year. In looking at this, on the general, okay, so on the general, it's, in my mind, is fully appropriatable. Appropriable. The transportation trust should be utilized for expenditures that are transportation-related, and I would recommend that that might not be appropriated to specific projects, because you have a number of road-related projects where you don't know what the funding's going to be now. And the $1.4 million in municipal services should be, if that's generated through fire assessments, waste assessments, and are the biggest amount. So, it should probably be used in those areas. And of the nine million, in working on the budget with your staff, we noticed that there are two loans, longstanding loans, that now have a balance of about $1.9 million. And if that were paid off right now, that would free up $988,000 of recurring revenues in the current year. So, I always think it's good to pay off debt when you can. And so, I personally, and I think staff recommends that that be done so that you have almost a million dollars of recurring revenue for the budget. Any questions?
Good. Y'all got any questions at this point, Rob?
Can you go into a little more depth on which two you're talking about?
Yeah, sure. There was a Hancock loan that was for road projects that was possibly five or six years ago. It has two or three years left on it. And then, there is a loan that I think purchased fire equipment, a number, or stations, a number of years ago, and it's down to where it can be paid off. But those are the two loans.
And the amount that is budgeted right now to, for those two loans, is how much each year? About nine, almost a million dollars?
Yeah.
And the total payoff for the two loans is what again?
Two million.
Two million.
And what specific was that Hancock loan, you said?
The Hancock loan was for some road paving at some point. I didn't completely, but I know it was related to road projects a number of years, because it was probably originally an eight- or 10-year loan, and it's within two or three years.
You know what roads it touched out of here else?
We don't know what roads it is. It was a long time ago. I mean, you borrow the money over a set period, and we're just nearing the end of that period. So, this is none of the utility stuff. This is strictly other debt that we feel important to pay off.
So, this has got, this number here most definitely doesn't have any relevance to the Route 6 and road project and stuff like that, correct? Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, that was before my time. I don't know what.
Yeah. Obviously, if it's getting close to the end, it's a long time ago.
We're gonna blame that on Rocky, Rocky. I mean, Buffy Rocky.
Bottom line is, you're saying we could pay these off for about $2 million, and it would free up $900,000 of reoccurring.
Almost a million, absolutely. That's the best way to look at it. Bottom line.
Okay.
So, is Kevin gonna?
And the funds are available to pay, the funds are available to pay these two loans off, right?
Yes, no problem, no issue. Because it's out of your year-end fund, cash in the bank.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. We're going to start off capturing our current capital projects. Okay, on the grant-funded side of things, Ellisville Fort White Quarterline. Don't hold me to this. Tomorrow, they're supposed to be doing some fancy mechanism down there to give good water. Project is complete, shy of a change order or some kind of a valve. Let's hope that works. Ellisville Well 3 redundancy, bid closed out on July 31st. Bids exceeded the grant amount. We're waiting to proceed with the project after October 1, the new monies. State Road 247 at Cannon Creek. This is the old Quail Heights Golf Course. Moving forward to the finalization of the permitting and review and insurance and all that, construction this summer. The OT's funding it. We're building it, and we will owe an EMT upon completion. Farnell Hills is under construction. High Drive is under construction. And, Mr. Farnell, you asked me the other day, I do feel comfortable having it paid by the first of the year. Farnell.
What about High Drive?
Maybe by the first, maybe.
We finished?
I hope so, yes, sir.
Okay.
I think our time expires by the first. Okay, Queens and Brea, Winfield. We're done with that project. We are waiting on grant reimbursements. Richardson Historical Repair under the design phase. Fire Station Administration under construction. Horton Steelman finalizing the plans, bid docs. Sky and Jordan set the bid out on August or September. County Road 240 Safety Project. Project is complete. Swan Lake Valley Tower. Is Motorola here?
Yes.
Okay. Currently holding, even though we're ready to go with the project, temporarily held off, and when I button all this up here today, I'm going to ask our Motorola folks to come talk to us. So, I'll go ahead and kind of just touch on later on, but Lawrence submitted a $5 million annual maintenance cost for the next four or five years. I called him, I said, "Larch, you missed a comment there." He said, "I didn't." That was a shock. So, I said all that and say this. Motorola can talk to us about the rest, okay? It's a big number. Okay, 500 acre park, Phase 1 RFQ has been awarded, currently under negotiation. Scheduling of survey and testing for ponds. E06 complex design, got rid of that. Bell Road Extension, we are in the design phase. For everybody, especially your knowledge, Mr. Farnell, that is design only. We think we've got enough money to buy some properties, but that's where it stops, this current pot of money. Out at Inter Motor Park on Tyre Road, we're preparing to bid docs. Construction only, less than 1,000 foot. Ellisville, Howe, and Farnell, so we've got three projects down there. We're under construction, Farnell Road. We're going to award the bid on the Quadrant Road tonight. That's two of the three we're rolling with. Third phase, we, a couple weeks when we up here talk about CEI awards, construction awards on Phase 3. I'm proud to announce, Mr. Phillips, that project is very much ahead of schedule, all three phases. We're doing good there. Dort Street Construction Complete. Ellisville FDOT Wastewater Treatment Plant Interconnect. We're reviewing bid package, should be out, bid by the month, and we have buttoned up Bascom Norris out of Ballfield. Brand new road, complete. So, on the books, about $58 million. We've done about $16,542 on the books on the grant-funded side of things that we're still right this month. Are there any questions about grant funding before I move on to county? Okay. County funding. River Rise Boat Ramp is 90% complete. Rum Island Park waiting on the permit. We're House Chiller and Bowler under contract. Fire Department, air condition, Race Track Road waiting on contractor. It's out to be, it's done. Lift station electrical panels, replacement at Ellisville. Panels arrived, waiting installation. Train 1 repairs at Ellisville, complete. Lift station bypass repairs at Ellisville underway. Alligator Lake Bark Bridges, we're done. Jail Cooler and Freezer replacement, materials ordered. Petroleum cleanup, working with DEP. Purchase orders, proceed with construction. Jail Admin Design, as Tosh indicated, that, I think, in the year or somewhere else. We're holding off, we're going to try to get some grants going on that. Animal Control, I think we all know what we're doing with Animal Control, right? Lake City Reporter Building. So, we had a meeting a few weeks ago, and we got a plan figured out. We're going to do what's necessary at this time to accommodate two renters, and if we're going to give this rent money back up, that's going to pay for that cost, and if we're going to simply wait for some pots money to go and do it right. That was a collective decision with David and several other team members. Okay. Where's that?
RC Track.
Sir?
RC.
Okay, RC Track. Open bids for the bar, receive votes for the restroom. This is one we're going to ask the TDC to help us match it up. Cypress, Lake, and Charles, we completed mediation as an imminent domain proceedings. Still got to pay a lawyer. Mayo Road. We have closed on 30 parcels. So, we got a permit, got a set of plans. We're doing property acquisition to turn it over for submission to FDOT. 30 parcels have closed, 13 left. Five of the 13 have agreed, have signed agreements, just not closed on them. That leaves seven that we just simply have not responded. One has talked to us, but six have not responded at all. So, out of whatever that math is right there, forty-seven pieces, we're doing pretty supportive. We're down to about seven pieces. Bascom Norris Broadway, we closed on the first parcel. Burt Avenue awarded to Anderson Columbia. Vosk Road is on the docket for tonight. 247 in Bascom Norris, currently in the design phase. FDOC construction set for 2027. This is your expansion of Bascom Norris from I-75 to the Bowling Alley, all that bad intersection right there. And so, that's good for 2027. So, roughly 7.2 in cost, we spent about 3, about 4.2 left over. Are there any questions as it relates to capital projects? County funded? Okay. So, where are we at as it relates to new capital projects? Okay. Eaton, and we, management feels comfortable that these are good projects to fund. We've got the money to fund them. Eaton Battery System, $10,900. Computer Aid Dispatch, $40,530. Haggard, $37,000. What's going on at Haggard? I believe this is in Purfey District. Out at the livestock market on 41, right across is a dirt grade that's got some badass curves in it. The owner is willing to donate the property free of charge for us to go and straighten out the curves, okay? That's uniqueness. When people are willing to help us, that makes it work out. Not only will you be able to straighten out some dangerous curves, it will give you the ability for the right of way. Obviously, one day, that little cut through roads will get paid, okay? So, $37,000 is basically lime rock and material on my side. Do it in-house. Okay. Public Works Parking Lot, Public Works kind of looks like a quilt. We can repave that. I was going to capture paving around the dog kennels, but I'll get that done too. Public Works Doors, made a new door on the shop. Courthouse Landscape, Clint says we need to spruce up the courthouse, or house entrance door, $20,000. Ferguson Building at $18,000, AC repair. Got a problem with some lights of Mr. Farnell's Winfield, $14,000. Lawrence is getting ready to take some old towers down at Kalamora Hill, $1,000. Jails, $250,000. Microwave Network and maintenance and whatnot, $65,000. Fire Personnel Radio, $66,000. Radio Network APS, $150,000. This is from Lawrence. Mosquito Resistant Lab out of the landfill, $10,000. And at the old Lake Shore Hospital Administrative Building, the judges are wanting to get in there, and that's a remodel of $500,000. Total, $1.138 million. So, obviously, you guys don't vote today. There's one more project I'm going to talk about before I forget this part. I would like a consensus. David and I tried to button everything up, a consensus that the board supports these new capital projects.
Discussion? I'm good. I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Mr. Farnell?
I had, for Winfield, I did a little thing there, maybe about some remodeling interior-wise. Is that here or not there?
Have you sent it to me?
It was like a long time ago.
Okay, yes, sir. If I've got it, have you still got it?
Yeah, I still got everything in email.
If you'll pop it off to me, you remember what it was? Was it a bunch?
Yeah, it was a good bit. I'll send it to you.
Okay.
I'll resend it.
With the board's consensus, please send it to me, and I'll add it to the list. If we can afford it, I'll get it done for you. How about that?
Gotcha.
Okay. Mr. Chair, y'all good with it?
Good.
Okay, there's one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to remind everybody, these projects will be funded by the excess towers that Mr. Powell presented.
Non-recurring.
So, this does not impact the rest of your budget.
This is your non-recurring fund Mr. Powell referred to. Okay. Another project got, brought it to me post the publication of this agenda. We are maybe fortunate enough to get a Publix out on State Road 47, out on the south side of I-75 right there. Mr. Scott Stewart's here, explain what his thought process is. Then, if y'all don't mind, when Mr. Scott buttons up, I'm going to ask Motorola to come up and talk about maintenance on radio towers, okay? Thank y'all.
Scott, just give your name for the clerk, please.
Scott, Scott, I hope you're right about this, because we're all going to get 100 calls about Publix.
Yeah, we're working very, very hard.
You give us your phone number, and we will forward everything straight to you.
I'm going to tell you what we all know, but first of all, thank you for hearing us, and we have a few people are going to maybe chat a little bit too, they asked for information. But we're at on it right now. We've got, as you probably have seen, we've got the access, the in-and-out second road constructed down there for the right in, right out for down the project. We've got all the bids together from Jimmy Boone, et cetera, for all the water, the sewer, infrastructure, all that, and also bids for the lift station, all that done. And we've been working, as you probably know, on an accession to the city. So, all these have been vetted towards the city specs. So, we have the thing ready to roll, and I met with Jimmy yesterday, and met with a lot of city people and utility people for the last couple of days. And where I'm at on this thing, I need one more help from you folks, and I can pull the trigger and get this all started. I do appreciate all the efforts you've all done over the last many years. I think you've known we've been working this thing for quite a while. It's been a lot of details and efforts and plans and reviews and changes, and the bores under the road are done now. I think you know, water, sewer, and gas are all under the road, and they're into my property now. That contract stops. I need to take, that's part of what we have to get figured out here. I have to take that and finish it from where that grant stopped, and take it to the rest of the project. And that's, Debbie's going to chat about that just a little bit. So, I'm at right now is to the point where I could literally sign contracts with Jimmy, because I've got, I like his bids, they're decent, and I could start it, and I can have this project all done for lift station done, utilities in, roads done, where the pipes going under the roads, all done, all hooked up. And Jimmy says we have it all done by February, this coming February. So, first quarter of 2026, that thing can come alive down there. But I, we, I need some help on the lift station, which is, as you know, is a public property or public thing. So, I'm not asking for things that are on my prep, asking for some, I need some help on that. The city is going to give us what equivalents to three years of their property tax as a credit back, and ask me how that worked. They said we will give you, they're voting on that, I think, this week or shortly. They said that would be cut to you October 1st. It goes to Jimmy, and that's part of what I've got stitched together is all those details. But I'm down to, so I need some help from the county on a portion of that. And then, I would take all the rest of the expenses on there of taking it from where the lines currently end, get lift station built, all the power, the generators. The city has told us that the size of motors we're putting in for that are the biggest they have in the county. So, it's a big project down there. Big motors, big project down there. We've had some conversation with engineers the last couple of days, and kind of long story short, it is, it's a transition between the city and the county right now. It's county, in the county, but it's going to the city. And so, it's different specs, but we're going to go to the highest spec that's requested for the, like, the road base. We're going to a thicker road, thicker asphalt, more than normal, to kind of help create a little precedent of how roads should be built in the area, because sometimes roads get built a little bit, kind of. And I don't want, I don't want to have a reputation of doing it cheap. So, we're going to actually up the quality of the roads that are in there. I know that's not your long-term problem, but it is part of help with the concept of the county that we're doing. County wants things built right, and we do too. So, that's part of something I have to get digested is those roads a little bit. But I am prepared, if I get to this meeting with the positive results or shortly, to sign contract with Jimmy and get started on the whole thing down there. So, it's, I'm very excited about that. I have, we say we have Zaxby's, I want to go, and I have Matt here, who's a speaker of Zaxby's. We have, Eli Yanis wants to go in there. Those are two solid ones, and we're close to McDonald's, a gas station, and Debbie's going down to ICSC, which is a big international show down Orlando next week. And she's actually meeting with Publix again. Our site plans have been designed. About a year ago, we pulled them off the table and redid them, and we did them to plan for a Publix, even though they said, at that time, they said they weren't coming. We've still been planning on that. So, our designs are that way, and we've got their guidance about how many parking places they want, the size of it. So, we've taken our plans, we've modified that for them, and they've told us what we want, and we've given it to them. They have not said we're going in here yet, but we keep walking this path that way. And so, I cannot say here today that with this request that I guarantee they'll come, but I know if I don't get water and sewer down there, I guarantee that they're not going to come. That I know. And what I don't want to do, and I, and I won't do this, but I don't want to do this. I don't want to become like a lift station, I mean, a septic tank project like Tractor Supply, although I want Tractor Supply to come too. We want full use of the sewer that's down there. A lot of money from all of you has been invested down there. We've invested. So, I want to continue that process, but I need, I need a lift station to put those pipes into use and to get people to come. They're good tenants. So, I need that final component put together. And I'm hoping that the county will see that. I think it's a very, very visible project. There's a lot of jobs, I believe, will be created. I'm going to say about 100 at least. I know I've got at least five different businesses, not even counting Publix. Each of us have 20 employees, whichever would, that's 100, 100 jobs. So, I know I've got jobs down there. Debbie's went through and did a big estimate of the property tax that would be created, and she has that number. It's a lot. So, right now, that project has been sitting down for 10 years with a low property value. And I think with the board's help, we can get that fired up. In a year from now, that thing's alive. It's done, it's alive, it's assessed for different, it's finished lots. I will challenge Matt to get Zaxby's open up within this calendar 2026. You probably could. I think you could, but you want to say a few things, Matt? You want to talk to us a little bit? And I said, Matt, maybe you can come by, because, you know, they hear me talk, but I want them to know that this is a real live, well, process, and then I'll...
Thank you, guys, for your time. My name's Matt Carlton. I'm the Zaxby's licensee for that project. I'm here on behalf of Scott to show support and that this is real. I have done all the due diligence on my end that's required to get the site approved. Zaxby's has approved the site. I've signed the franchise agreement. I've paid for the franchise fee. And I've also engaged a civil engineer who is in the middle of drawing the site plan for me now, so I can send it out to bid. But yeah, this is something that, as soon as Scott can turn it over to me with all the hookups necessary, I'm going to go vertical, and I'll be open in 100 days. So, my investment is about 2.5 million, and I'll have 30 full-time employees. So, that's kind of where I'm at, and it's exciting to be the first business to commit. I just, I'm ready to sign the lease, but we got to have this lift station. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Matt.
Debbie, you got a minute to chat a little bit?
We okay as Matt?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, um, I'm Debbie Benefield. I work with Scott on a lot of projects here in town. I also do all the real estate for that development. Um, just, I mean, what I'm gonna show you here on this presentation, um, which I will preface by saying do not use Claude AI to do a presentation. You cannot print it well. So just fun fact. Um, so what we're gonna see here and, and on the, we can start with the last page. I reached out to the tax assessor's office to help come up with valuations for what these properties would be once they're fully complete. How that process is, is done, how it worked out with, um, the other commercial developments in town like Hobby Lobby, uh, where Hobby Lobby is, where Publix is, how those were assessed. Um, we went out and we found comps with other like properties, um, within this and, and, uh, adjacent counties, um, to see what new developments of these kinds like QSRs, grocery stores, C-stores, um, casual dining and inline space would be valued at. So based on those valuations, we came up with about, well, in excess of twenty-five million dollars in, um, potential, uh, tax valuation. And, um, that would provide for tax revenue to the city and to the county. Um, based on those numbers or that number of twenty-five million dollars, the, um, the city would, would receive about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. Um, the county would receive about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. Um, based on that and the, the city's, uh, contribution of three times that number, uh, that was, that their annual revenue, they, they've committed to that three hundred and seventy thousand dollar number. Based on three years of the estimated tax revenue for the county, that number would be about five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And that helps get us to that number that, uh, obviously there'll still be some developer contributions, but the number that Scott was referring to as far as the lift, lift station cost. Um, I think if, if that three-year, um, number was available and able to be contributed to the project, of course, we could pull the trigger and everything could, could be a go. Um, and I'll let him speak to what, you know, what, what other opportunities might be, um, uh, in line with that. Of course, the project's got a lot of benefits. We all, we both, well, heard all those. Scott went ahead and kind of shared. I'm gonna be meeting with, um, Publix next week at ICSC in Orlando. Um, we've had several conversations. Um, many of those have been trying to establish how the site was gonna be laid out. Um, how, what developers could do the project, things like that for them. So I'm helping them to maneuver through the, the, uh, the project itself. We, we don't have a final commitment, but it is something that I'm working on. Certainly this would help, so.
Have you been before the economic development board with this yet, with this project or with this request?
With the lift station?
Uh, with, with the, uh, for three years?
No.
I, I, I guess no, we have a score sheet. I would like to see the score sheet on this.
Sure. I think the, the reason we brought, that this was brought before the city and the county, um, and the city has committed their portion of it. Um, the reason was, is we're trying to get this done, you know, quickly, um, so that people like Matt can go ahead and proceed with these projects. Um, Scott's ready to pull the trigger on this. It can be started next week and completed as early as first quarter. So I think it was just a matter of let's, you know, there was, there was discussion of discretionary funds and there was discussion of being able to just kind of pull the trigger and move forward.
In reference to the economic, reference to economic development, and we worked that, started maybe three or four years ago. Um, and we went through the process and we, we got those forms where you build the jobs and that kind of stuff. And we ran up the pipeline and it stalls out and we went to, uh, grants several times and run up the pipeline and it stalls out. And so, um, we've worked that thing several times. So it's not that we haven't, we've worked it. And it gets to a certain point and it kind of stalls out. And I think we've been working on one right now. I think that same thing, it's kind of up there. We're supposed to hear back two weeks ago and then today and tomorrow and, and they, they run up there and they stall out. So, um, what I, what's, what I'm hoping to avoid is that stall out again. You know, I can, if I get a little bit of help, I can, I can do it and start now and we're done. Um, otherwise I say, well, let's wait another month or two or three. It goes in this thing and it gets stalled out again. So we have looked at those things before. Um, and we all like the free money, but I also like a project that can, that can be done. And, uh, I, I, that's the last opponent I have is, is that portion, is this meeting right now. And, uh, if I get that done, then, then it's in my court and I can move. I don't have to wait for any grants and reports and the, I can just, I can get Jimmy, we can go. And, um, we met with the city yesterday and their, their inspector now told me that he was the one that did the inspections for Publix in Newberry. So we told it to Debbie Shugget on tell, because they liked him down in Newberry. Anyway, he's familiar with inspection of, of current Publix. So we're trying to get things lined up. And I think we've, you know, we've got a lot of stuff lined up. Even we met, um, the city the other day to get the realignment of the three borns done. Got it tweaked in because it came on the middle of the lot, got it fixed. We get that all worked out. So I'm literally down to this. That's it. I have no more permits for the DOT like the north side, the north side's got a lot of challenges on the north side. I don't think with Swanee, I have no permits. I got the city on board. I got, I have, I have nothing left except this request. And with this request, I sign and we're ready to go. And then I can sign things with Matt and Debbie, but down at Publix. And we've got, you know, we still work with some gas stations. I mean, I don't know if you should say which ones, but, and we're working with, um, some breakfast, like Waffle House and Hub House, those two back in the corner. So we've got a lot of things we're very excited about, but like Debbie said, Matt wants to sign the lease like last week. He said, I'm not signing it till I know I can deliver it, because it's been a while, a while, a while, so I'm down to that. So, um, you've been very great to work with and I appreciate all your help. We can get one more thing done. I don't know how all this process really works, but I do need a need. Um, and I know this would be a very visible thing out there. Um, and I, I wanted to Daniel like care of kind of Publix site. We're done. And they did the easiest project they ever had. They say, you mean your roads are in, tension's in, your sewer's in, pad ready, ready to go? Yep, yep, yep. You can start there. I mean, I don't know I can do any easier than that. And it's not a, a hope. It's not a ten-year plan, one day, one day. This is not. So I think it'd be a great return on investment. Um, it's, I know that it would be in the city sort of, but really that whole area is the county. All those people that visit down there, they're, they're not gonna know it's the city project. So it's in the county and all the people up and down forty-seven and forthright and all that whole area, they want a public. I think you kind of know that in your comment, but I won't give you my phone number. They can give it to you. Here's the stat.
I got mine.
Just, I don't want to lead you wrongly and cry wolf. I don't have this public still done, but I'm really close, I hope. And when we get the plans ready for them and walk this path, it's like we're right there. I just wanna say, what are you in the next part? It's because we're ready for it. That's, I'm hoping to get that job for them.
Any questions for us?
So Publix isn't a done deal. Publix isn't a done deal yet. Is there a backup plan for another big box grocery store or something? If they just say, hey, we're not coming to Lake City, we don't want another one there. Is there a backup plan for another big box store to go there?
Um, this, this is a good question. That site has been laid out for, it's a six acre site for Publix. But if they don't go there, something will. Um, we've had a list of others we talked, that we've, as a backup in our mind, but we really want a Publix down there. So the answer, there will be something there.
Right. So there is a backup plan just in case. Okay. I mean, I want the Publix there just as bad as anybody else does. I don't live down there, but I know a lot of people that do and we, we want the Publix. Um, but just if they back out, we need to have something else there, especially if we're gonna.
What, what helps if we get this thing done is I can be a little more lenient with Publix and negotiating with them. They come and say, well, we'll do it if it's this, but I can't really have a conversation if I don't, if I don't know all my, my costs right now. So if they come back and say, we'll do it, but what about this? If I know that, then I can say yes, and I can put the hook in. So, um, I, I'm down to just this last thing to understand and then she'd go down there with this information and, and maybe we'd get things done. So, um, it's not done and we, we won't, I mean, the project will still come alive and all the fun stuff, just the back, it's not, but I, so, good question.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question for Kevin and David. Oh, I know we have set aside some money already for a lift station on this project. How much is the county? I can't, I, I, I'm not prepared because I didn't know this was gonna be here, but I know we have put money aside already to, we need to pay for a lift station on this project. How much money are we already spending on this project?
Um, to answer your question, we commit up to five hundred thousand dollars on the, uh, getting the sewer underneath forty-seven.
Correct.
And that's the amount that we committed.
So we've committed five hundred thousand out of general fund right now for this project?
That helped get it underneath the road to us and that's why I say appreciate that help very much.
Uh, David, where are you bringing that money from? I know that hasn't been expended yet, but curious, that's real.
Um, Amy and I will have to sit down and go over it. Uh, just depends where the appropriate places. Could come from economic development, future enhancements, which is the most probable place. Or if there's another place, we can take it from there. Obviously, we would have to bring that to the board.
Well, this is, this is a workshop, so really we can't vote on this tonight anyway, so, oh. Just, I, I'm just saying, we do have a procedure for this and I think, I think we might be, I think we might, should. If we don't go through the procedure we have for this, are we gonna do this in the future for other companies? My question, you know what I'm saying? You might be setting a, setting something here that, oh. You're bypassing the economic, or economic development board is what I'm saying. You're bypassing that. And I don't know that that's a good thing to get started doing, so. Um, I, I'd like to hear some of the commissioner's thoughts on that, but.
Well, I mean, how, how long can it take to do it, do the score sheet and get that figured at economic development? Because it's shocking. I would say we can't vote on it, so.
We meet once a month, so, you know, that could be on the next agenda for sure.
When's the next meeting, you know?
Well, we just had one this morning. It'll be, it'll be the, uh, second county commissioner meeting next month, same day, whatever that is.
Well, it'll be a huge deal to have a Publix in that part of the county.
Oh, I agree. I'm all for the Publix getting there. I'm just, I just wonder about the process.
One you do for the other. That's right.
Uh, if I may, uh, Rocky, uh, Mr. Ford, um, you're probably aware of this, I'm sure being the chair there. But the, uh, economic development has dealt with this. I, I, I can't refer to the scorecard because I'm like you, I, I don't know if it's the. But what I do know, they did resubmit a jobs growth grant on this, which is sitting in Tallahassee today. There was a risk grant also, correct me, Rocky, that, that we, they started off with. But what Mr. Stewart just simply spoke of, it falls upon dead airs. It's just that simple. When we got a developer that can't get response, we got a problem. And I'll just say it like it is. So, uh, myself and Mr. Kirby, I was invited to that meeting at Scott's office, month and a half ago probably. And, uh, you know, trying to get direction as to how this thing lines up, uh, it, there, there was progress made, I think, you know, to that point where, and it, it all relates to what Joel will be speaking on. Uh, I don't know about in this workshop or whatever, uh, in relevance to the, if, if I, if I say this wrong, Lakeshore reporter, don't say satellite annexation or whatever we're gonna call it, but that, that, that's a, uh, that's a huge tool to use in the future, uh, for development. And this is gonna be the first project that, uh, we'll have discussion upon, uh, within the county. Uh, the econo, and I'm like Mr. Ford, we, uh, there, we've got avenues here, uh, and because of Scott's timeline that has developed basically overnight in the last, well, I'm just gonna step out there and say the last month, things have really changed. And, but I know I stay in contact with Tallahassee and, uh, because I was asked to. And, uh, but at the end of the day, everything was resubmitted, was submitted, resubmitted, resubmitted, and it's sitting there now. But nobody on this board, nobody in this county can call the governor and say, hey, you, you need to go look at this, you know? It's all upon him. And, uh, David and I, I'm not speaking out of turn by saying that, I think that's pretty well the way it works, isn't it? And so, you know, so my point is, is that if this board decides, uh, to go down this road of a, what called an incentive, uh, in economic development as of today, there, you know, there's about a million, I'm, I'm gonna be conservative. There's a million five more than accessible sitting there. Uh, and Mr. Ford, you could allude to, there's probably, I'm sure there's talk of other projects that I'm not aware of on the economic development side. But the, uh, that's what that money's for. And time is of the essence, because the one thing I wanted to point out is that this is gonna be the last hurrah, if that's what you wanna call it, for forty-seven seventy-five. You gonna get possibly a Wawa, possibly something else on the north side. But until, when that takes place, and I'm talking about single buildings now, everybody in this room's probably seen projected conceptual drawings as to what would go on the north side, that ain't gonna happen. It's, uh, uh, myself and Mr. Kirby sat in a meeting, uh, just here a couple of weeks ago with DOT, uh, with the developers, uh, that develops Wawa stores. And, uh, they pretty well told us. I mean, I left that meeting, Kevin, stop me if I had to say something wrong. The first person to write a pretty good sized check for a red light, you're gonna put a store down there and that's gonna be it until the feds and the state comes off a lot of money. Because forty, every single little project down there sparks. Sparks that trigger that's somewhere's out there in the neighborhood of, I've heard numbers up to twelve, fifteen million dollars worth of improvements at that intersection. Kevin, go ahead and put the heights in.
Yes, sir. You're, you're, you're hitting nail on the head. On the north side, one rooftop for a minimal amount of money. And after that, a big, big number.
Yeah.
The, the DOT and the feds have got to work together on.
And we don't have that problem at all.
Right. No, no, and that's what I was gonna allude to, Scott. On that side, I call it the south side. You know, the previous owners of that property had enough foresight to put that, they helped you and you didn't realize it, but now you do. And, uh, but I guess what I'm saying is that Mr. Ford's a hundred percent right. We've got an investment down there. But I'm sitting there looking, you know, with the Tractor Supplies, a done deal, it's coming. They're digging, they're fixing, digging, it's out for bid today. Uh, but the unique thing, I've been asked this a hundred times, the unique thing about Tractor Supply, it's non-impactful to the interstate.
I agree.
And that's where, now there could, uh, me and Mr. Ford go down there and put a, whatever we wanna call it down there. As long as we're capturing local traffic, it's not an impact to the intersection, you know, that triggers that big number. And, uh, but, and, and one thing I know, because everybody on this board, every commissioner here, and I appreciate what y'all jumped up and did this year. But the amount of money that I've heard that Mr. Stewart is going to have to rake out for this extra, what let's call it, the extra road, more, higher quality road, that's what we need to be paying attention. That's one of the things we need paid. How much did we just spend on rain power?
Several hundred thousand dollars.
You know, so my point is, is that, uh, one day somebody's gonna accept that thing and you need to accept the quality structured road rather than what we just went through in all these years of rain power.
But if they annex all that into the city, then are we?
E, e, either way, e, either way, I mean, we're always.
That road, that's not our road, is it?
That's correct, but it still sets kind of a precedent for people in the area that they have to build roads to the standards. So it's, it's correct. It's, it's a city's problem. But in my mind, if we tell people you gotta build your roads right, that gets filtered through people, development concepts like, well, he had to build this road even though he didn't need to. That's what I wanna, I wanna help create this, um, incentive to other people to do things right. And it is right. I mean, Kevin and I have a good talk about it. We could get by with less than a road. It could get through, but I don't really wanna do that. I wanna come in, in cheap just to get by. I wanna do it right. You know, it's not a county problem down the road. It's still in the, the county, it's still in the area and I wanna, I wanna do it right. What I, what I like about this room is that people in this room have the ability to launch this prob, this project. And, but I can't go to Tallahassee. I don't know those people. I can't wait for them. We've tried it a couple of times. And so I know the people in this room have the ability to say, okay, and we're, we're, we're greenlighting, we go. And it is on to me and you guys do, have to worry about it, worry about it. I take from here and probably early first quarter next year. Well, Jimmy had started doing work. He said he started doing dirt, the early dirt work about a month from now. You get mobilized, you have to order all the equipment, the stuff comes in. Um, he, we talked to the city and they said, the city said, Jimmy says five months for this stuff. And the city said, we will step in, they will help you get these pieces faster, because the, the people will listen to the city faster than listen to you as a contractor. So we'll get ahold of them, we'll tell them we want this stuff now. Jimmy said that will help, we can expedite it. So. So all these things, we're, we're working to, truly to expedite it, to get it done. And, you know, I, I don't know why I would not be able to have it done by first quarter. I, all the stuff we went through all these years, all the, the permits and the, the eminent domains and the Swanee water permits and taking the tanks out and the EPAs. And all stuff we went through for ten years, so it has, it has happened soon. But it's ten years in the process, or eight years in the process, to get this moment up soon. And what's pushing it now is the, is the movement from the city to the county, from the county to the city. And publics, the activity, and the era of business right now, the time to do it, I think, I need to pull it here. I can't wait for four more years or for this to fall apart or something to happen. I just, it's like, this is the time to do it. And the people in this room right now can help me get that done, and that's what I'm asking for, is your help.
So, Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Rock.
I was just wondering, when would you want this five hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars?
Um, as long as you know it's coming, I'm flexible, um, because I have room in the timing thing. So if I knew it's coming, I'm, I'm good to go. So that would, that'd be, you would tell me that, you know, um. And if you, if you tell me when that would be, I'd say, okay. And you say it goes to Jimmy, I'd say, okay. So I don't need it right now, I just need to know it's there so I can plan.
So, so this whole project hinges on less than six hundred thousand dollars?
The delay of it does. So it, it does, so yeah, I will probably get it done one day. When is that one day? I don't know. But I know right now it's all lined up. I could say, if we get it done, I could say, we're going and we go, like, we, we're off on it. So, um, it's been a, a long time working and working and money and interest and expenses and all that kind of stuff. And I'm down to that detail um with a, with something that is a public thing. You know, I, I had the option, I think, to go and apply for a grant for the, the acceleration, the D cell lane on public property out there. And I did it, and I said, it's, it's not gonna work. It takes too long, which entity? So that one, I, I paid for that one myself. So that's, again, that's in public, that's not for me, that's public land, so, but I can't keep doing that, just the well is, I can't keep going and doing that. So I need some help on this thing. So whether, whether this is, I don't know how you wanna justify the help. But it's in a broad spectrum of things that it's, maybe it's the, it's the lift station is the final part that I need to get figured out. But there's more, it's a whole project that's, that's gonna come to life, not just a lift station, it's a whole project.
I, I was just wondering how this, this is roughly a little over a million dollars. How do we, how, how does that compare to other projects that we've uh, we've worked on, that we've helped fund? Or incentivized with economic development? It seems like a lot of, lot of, lot of incentive to me for this project, for the county.
And I don't know what other projects can generate a hundred jobs and start within a year from now. I think in my, and I don't know all that you've done, but in my mind, this thing, it comes, it starts paying off fast with a hundred jobs. So, good question, what else, this five hundred thousand, what else can you do with that to create a hundred jobs? I don't know. But I think it's pretty good. I think return investment's pretty good. I think the, the timing's pretty good. I think the, the, coming out of the ground's pretty good. It's not like we do it and we wait and wait and wait. This is, comes to life now, so good question, what else can you do with five hundred thousand to get a hundred, to get a hundred jobs? I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's got, I, I'm, I'm all for this project, don't get me wrong. I think it's a great project.
Yeah.
But that's why we have an economic development director to answer these questions and stuff for us, compared to what, you know. I guess what I'm saying, I'm not qualified to make that decision, because I don't know enough.
I think David remembers, we, we had some of those journeys, went back with Jennifer and Steph and the forums and things like that. We went through this process and the checklist and things back and forth and how it'd work. And so the process is, is like, that's what it does. It's like, ah, you know, it's like that. And so, um, we, we've ran that journey several times, we, we hit it, we're on it again right now. And it's, um, I don't wanna keep taking time for your meeting.
No, you're fine. I mean, that's.
But, I mean, is there?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Rock. No, go ahead.
Is there any way to, to get with, I, I'm sure the economic development board is a lot like ours. Okay, y'all look at the numbers and y'all let us know what's going on. Is there any way to have the people that do the work at the economic development board as far as the scorecard and the, and the, and let us know what that? If we're close, or is that, is that possible?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure it's possible. I don't know how.
We don't have to wait on the next meeting to start that.
Is this something we're looking at voting on tonight at our regular meeting, or?
I'm not, I'm not now.
Mr. Chair, tonight?
In the next two or three weeks. Oh, I'm sure, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't wanna, I don't wanna commit something right now.
David, in your mind, is this, is this score good?
Go ahead, go ahead, Joel. I'm sorry, Scott.
Yeah, I was just, Commissioner Ford's dead on. There's no voting on this. I think what is being done here is just a, almost like what would happen at the economic development advisory board, right? Like, hey, I got this thing I wanna do, here's why I wanna do it, here's what the issues are. The comparable project is Hutton. When we redeveloped the old Pelican property where Dix is and everything now. It was the same concept. It was whatever you generate will get refunded back to the developer. I think that's why they've, that's what the numbers look like based on refund. Um, and in terms of the ORI model, it'd be the same thing. No matter what the board's inclination might be, all you could do today is say, well, this sounds good to us, or it doesn't sound good to us. We would absolutely have to negotiate an economic development incentive agreement, no matter what. Even if it's just a straight grant, it has to be done under one twenty-five oh four five, this board would have to say grace over it. So I think if I'm hearing Mr. Stewart correctly, he's wanting to know, is there a level of interest in this? We could call a special meeting of EDAB. That's not a big deal.
Correct.
Uh, we could do the score sheet. You can't vote on this at earliest until, you know, next board meeting, which would be the first week of September. The other thing is, this would all relate to, under the charter, this would relate to budget year beginning October first. So if y'all did, what we're talking about right now is things to be funded with year-end fu, year-end money. The charter now says you have to budget that. So you, so even if you wanted to spend year-end money right now, you couldn't until October first.
Correct, correct.
So, I think, and, and Mr. Stewart asked me, asked Tim, asked Kevin, you know. That was kind of the thought process here, is, well, there's a year-end money coming up, and if the board were inclined to give you some of that year-end money, that would fund this. So that's kind of where the prism is, but that does not mean we don't follow the steps. I think Commissioner Ford is dead on right. We have to make sure we follow process.
And, 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 and Rocky, you're right, and I, I agree with you, everything you said, Joel, it's just a process of, you know, we can make this. We can put all the, the right people in the room today to get this rolling. And, but what Mr. Stewart's looking for, is there a, not a commitment, is there an interest from this board that we're gonna willing to go down this road? Because that's what he's looking for. Is that when he does, or Ms. Bennifield ends up in South Florida, she, they can speak with confidence. I get that.
That's exactly right.
And they uh, you know, economic development agreements, as Joel said, you know, it's ha, Joel needs to be in that room negotiating it. Uh, uh, Jennifer, the, the parties, but this thing can move fast. It cannot drag. I, I understand his frustrations, you know, Tallahassee's a big bog. But there's a lot of bogs in between Tallahassee and Clemmie County, too. And uh, I'm just gonna leave it at that. But the uh, uh, this is a, this is a vital project for, and that's my point. We got a half billion dollars invested already, like Mr. Ford said, and I agree with him a hundred percent. And uh, there's sometimes, it's, it's, I hate to call it a backup and punt because it's really not that. But uh, you know, I, I know this young man sitting over here, known him all, almost his life. And uh, that's, that's a big stretch for a young fellow like that, be saying, I'm fixing, you know, go on the hook for two and a half million bucks.
Well, and if I could add one more thing, uh, cuz again, Commissioner, Commissioners, you know, Mr. Stewart's not new to the process. Like I said, he's been going through all this stuff for years. He's too nice to say it. The reason he reached out to me, the reason he reached out to Tim, the reason he reached out to Kevin, is because of his frustration with time. And when the lift station came on as a thing that he didn't reasonably anticipate, like you need to come up with another big chunk of money for a lift station. Well, gosh, if I go back to the well, that's gonna be another year, two years, year and a half. He's got people like Mr. Carlton sitting over there, he's got publics potentially on the hook, you know, just waiting, waiting to set the hook. He saw that, this is what he shared with us at the meeting.
Exactly.
I, I don't wanna go back in another year and a half long process. And that was where this got brainstormed. Well, you know, if there is year-end funds, and if the board wants to do it, it's up to y'all to decide this, right? That might be an avenue to go a little faster. And so, uh, I, I, I really completely respect what Commissioner Ford's saying. I think he is exactly right in his instincts. Wait a minute, this is weird. It's weird. It's weird. I'm, I'm gonna tell it straight, straight up, it's weird, it's different, because the project is different, and the circumstances are a little different.
We don't expect any kind of votes here. We just, we knew there was a, a, a budget meeting here coming up. We wanted to get this out into the thoughts to see if this works out with the budget meeting. That's really the goal, and that's, we.
Scott, if I may, I'd just like to point out one thing, just for the board's knowledge, because I've been, you know, me and Scott talk on a regular basis. Uh, with the five eighty-eight, the three sixty-eight, call it three sixty-nine, that's not enough. Mr. Stewart's fix to write a check and go along with this, you know, you know, this uh, lift station somewhere around me, me and two. So it's not like, uh.
And that's not all, there's more than that. We gotta finish the hook up, but that's, um, those are my responsibilities after that.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Scott, I'll be the first one to say, I have a total interest in this.
Yes.
Yeah, we got it, man. I wanna see this project go forward.
It's there.
But there again, I wanna make sure my decision I make is the right decision.
I respect that.
Because like I said, when I go, I'm not qualified without further information to know if I'm making a good decision or not.
I'm a, I'm a businessman, I think that way, and, and my naivete, naivete, or my, my mind, this makes a ton of sense even for you. But I, I agree with you, you gotta go through, but I look at um the optics, a store, the exit liven up, the cost, the jobs, the, the tax bases. Like, I mean, I wish I could do these deals, you know, as a, invest five hundred thousand, get that many jobs, and get that much return on investment coming back that quick? And have all my constituents think I'm really great? So.
But I think, I think if all we're looking for is we have interest, we got that.
Appreciate it very much.
I know how frustrating it is. I've developed, done some developments myself. I know how frustrating you is, waiting on that thing.
The uh, Ms. Phil?
That's I, I, I'm just wanting to echo everything that they're saying. I'm all for getting this project done. The door is open. We need to get it closed so you can proceed. And I think it will happen, and I think it will happen fast, as long as we get all of the people involved to get economic development on board with all this going on.
Appreciate all your responses.
Scott, I just wanna say one thing. The north side that myself was alluding to, myself, Kirby. We've got, the, the, the pipes are across the ground on that side of the road, too. Sew, you know, sewage, water, gases there, it's ready to rock and roll. Uh, that's a big deal. So my point is, is that when the time comes in the very near future, that we're lobbying the state of Florida and the feds to bring that money to forty-seven, or that expansion of need, uh, that's gonna be, uh, you know, it's gonna be a card in our pocket right there.
Yeah, I think so, too.
You know, they see that this community's put forth their own investment in that interchange.
They'll see that it came alive and it works, and they'll say, we need to go to the other side also.
That's right.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Okay, uh, where are we at? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, come on up, sir.
Good afternoon, Rob Richardson, area sales manager for Motorola. Sounds like you guys have some questions for me. I didn't get a lot of context of what I was walking into here. Um, so I may not be prepared to answer all of them, but uh, I am happy to try to entertain and answer any other questions that you guys may have.
Kevin?
Good afternoon, sir. Um, so what brought you here, Dan? Thank you for coming. Um, our director of communications, Lawrence, submitted a five million dollar annual escrow, if you may, for a total of twenty million dollars, as I understand it, for upgrades to our current towers. Obviously, that resulted in a conversation between he and I, and I said, what, what is this? And in my terms, I'm not a radio person, um, basically my cell phone's gonna need to be replaced in five years. And it's gonna cost twenty million dollars for me to continue talking on our, our emergency responses, our deputies and firefighters, et cetera. So it's not a desire, it's a have to. So that led to question, what in the world are other counties doing, especially counties smaller than us? Because we know everybody has to have radios, and so Sherrell and I did quite a bit of research. And what I learned out of that, and I'm probably as ignorant as anybody in the world, what I'm fixing to talk about. There are multiple alternatives out there that especially are today that were not ten years ago. In other words, state systems, et cetera, that maybe when this law started was not available, that you could talk and talk in all areas of the county. But I've been educated, I know nothing but what I've been told, but that is kind of the only case. So in my terms, I call it, we bought a Mercedes Benz, and you can only work on it at the Mercedes place, and you're gonna do it exactly how they want it done. I think your challenge, I indicated about the tower construction up in Swanee Valley. Not necessarily the tower construction, but the equipment that goes on the tower. If you continue down this path, and no offense to you, sir, you're representing your company. If you continue down this path with Motorola, unless he brings new information today, and I hope you do. It's my understanding, you're hamstrung, you're, you're, you're committing to Motorola. And based on the data that I've received from other counties that use other methodologies, there are much cheaper venues today. Now, that being said, I think, based on a little bit of education I have on it, there will be a capital improvement side of that to make those transitions. But in that being said, my big concern is, I know we do not have one dollar escrow for this twenty, potential twenty million dollar upgrade in twenty thirty. So I compare it kind of like the landfill. If this is real, and if this, I think he's gonna validate that, oh. If this is real, it's a conversation, in my opinion, that management needs to have with the board of county commissioners. We've got a huge problem coming our way, guys, because you're gonna wake up at twenty thirty and need twenty million dollars. Or the deputies and the firefighters and whatnot are not gonna be able to communicate. Did that give you enough information?
I, I think I can speak to that to, to some degree. There's a lot of interest in, you know, how to, how do we save money, right? But I wanna start by, let's, let's set the level playing field. You use the analogy of a car, right? You, you referenced a car a few times. If I bought a car today and I ran that car twenty-four, seven. And I, I won't say pedal to the metal, but I'll ran that car at a decent RPM, twenty-four by seven. I think we would all agree it would cause a little wear and tear on that car, would it not? Okay, so along that way, you're gonna put gas in that car, right? It's not gonna run without gas, and we're gonna have to do some maintenance on that car, because it's running twenty-four by seven. So you've been doing some maintenance on the system twenty-four by seven, but it's at a very small scale. I would equivalent it to changing the oil and putting a little gas in it, okay? So that's what you've been doing today. But the car's still running, and it runs twenty-four by seven, and people's lives depend on it. Little bit different than the car, but you can still see, at some point, we're gonna need to replace the tires. At some point, we're gonna need to replace the wiper blades. We're gonna need to make some investments in that. And that's kind of where you're at. And what Lawrence is trying to get in front of is some of those bigger investments. So think like, hey, I need to do a transmission overhaul. This thing's been running twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five since it came on the air between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And the county's not made a significant investment in that infrastructure since it went on the air in twenty seventeen. So fast forward eight years now to where we are today, some of the equipment's becoming obsolete, obsolete, that's on the system. Much like your IT servers that you have in your infrastructure, much like the computer that you might type on in your office. At some point, it becomes obsolete, and for you to get it supported, for somebody to come work on it. You get a point where you have to replace that computer, because they can't get parts for it anymore. Same thing here. The technology that you bought in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that has been on the air since then, started a few years before you made that investment. So now we're having challenges getting the components for some of that hardware. And again, it's running twenty-four by seven, three sixty-five. So how do I keep the car running and do a transmission overhaul? The car's running. The deputies are not gonna stop talking on the radio. The firefighters are not gonna stop talking on the radio. We're not gonna stop nine-one-one calls for service, when, but we have to replace some of this equipment. And to do so, it's expensive. You don't want me to turn the system off or the car off in this analogy for a few days to make the repair. So, to Lawrence's numbers, which Lawrence, by his own admission, said that was by his map. He hasn't solicited quotes from Motorola for a lot of this equipment. There are some things coming up that you have to do, right? So one of the investments that you have to do because of equipment obsolescence is about one point two million dollars. And that would be due, you know, sometime in this timeframe, in the next three or four years that Lawrence is talking about. And again, that's equipment obsolescence. We're not gonna be able to support what you have beyond that date unless we negotiate an extended support agreement. Okay, then there are the stations, so think of them as like repeaters, right? What, when a deputy or firefighter keys up at the tower, there's our, the repeaters that repeat that signal so everybody can hear it. Those are gonna be due to be replaced in twenty thirty-two. So not in the next three to four years, but in. So not in the next three to four years, but in twenty thirty-two. That, that's like almost an engine overhaul for you. So from, just trying to stick with the car analogy here, so I'm not losing people, that's gonna be a significant investment. There are a few, a few million dollars, not one million dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If, if I may, sir, here's what's throwing me off. As you indicated, November seventeen, six tower cost and network. Six for a total of eight point nine million dollars. So in eight years ago, for roughly nine million dollars, we constructed six towers inclusive of the equipment. And let's just use your, you said a million in a couple of years, right? So in ten years, we're going somewhere around a million dollars, whatever you just said, a million, million and a half. And then in twenty thirty-two, what, if you had estimate or guesstimate, what would that number be?
I don't have a good grasp on the total number of base stations that you've got, and the labor forecasting, a labor model five years from now is, is during this economic time, it's a little bit of a challenge. But I would say probably in the neighborhood of four to five million dollars. Don't, I mean, don't quote me on that because I, I don't have enough context to, to just.
Well, using your four million dollar number, if we may, okay? So that means in thirteen years, for lack of a better word, you're over fifty percent of your initial capital cost of maintenance, if I'm understanding that right. And I would assume that problem just keeps on, as you indicated, that is your maintenance cost is what you're saying.
I, I, there's equipment obsolescence costs where we're gonna have to replace some things because you can't get parts for them anymore. And then there's routine maintenance, two, two different things.
So, so at the end, Mr. Chair, if I may, what, what I'm getting out of it is Lawrence might be a little high with his number, maybe, we don't know that yet. But I, I think the point's been taken. If we continue down the path we're currently going, I think it's only very reasonable that if we don't study some alternatives, we need to start escrowing money. Whether it be a million a year or two million a year, we don't really know the number. But that, 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 this just shocked me when I saw in seventeen, when this all come about. We spent nine million dollars in totality on six towers. I never dreamt the maintenance on that car would be what it is. That's, that's, that's me.
And, and I think we could all agree what we paid for something prior to COVID is not what we pay for it today, right?
Agreed.
The same thing for us, right? The, the chips, the electronics, all of those things that we produce and the services. People demand more money today. So skilled labor costs, there's a cost for time associated with that. One thing I will, because he keeps going back to, uh, the, the subscription type scenario. I, I will caution you this, and this is not, because we offer a subscription-based service as well. But I just want to caution you for that. You are giving up control. And in the, in the state's case, because I, I think that's part of what he's referencing here, the state law enforcement system that is throughout the state, there's only two tower sites in the county to provide coverage. So you may get a really cheap number to get on two sites, but what is that doing to the deputies and firefighters today that are used to talking on six, soon to be seven tower sites? It's a significant reduction in coverage. So if you're going to get a lower cost for the subscription, be wary of hidden costs if you want equivalent network coverage. So if you go to the state and you say, hey, I want what we've got today, but I don't want to pay a gazillion dollars like Motorola is trying to charge me, understand, it's not gonna be nine or ten dollars a month per radio, like you may have heard, because to get parity in the coverage, they're not giving those tower sites away either. They're going to charge you money to build those sites, and that's gonna be incorporated into what you pay on a lease basis. So just try for, for the board to have enough context around, ask those questions when you're having the workshop or talking about alternatives to make sure somebody's being forthright with you and making sure there's not hidden costs. Yeah, 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 come on over here in, in the honeymoon period, and then after the marriage is made, there's all these change orders, and you're like, whoa, 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 we, how come somebody didn't say something? So I, I cover from Polk County to Pensacola for Motorola. This is not a conversation that is not being had in other places. Experience has taught me, there's been a lot of people that have buyer's remorse for going in a different direction. Any additional questions or anything I can speak to for you? And again, those numbers that I gave you today are based speculatory numbers. We're happy to negotiate with you. Motorola holds three contracts in the state of Florida that people purchase off all day long. We don't want to lose your business. We're happy to work with you on a variety of different options to, to find some common ground where, what, what can we do? Extended service agreement was one I offered you. We do structured leases for places all over the, the, the state of Florida where they give predictable payments to cover these capital expenses so they can plan for them. Buy now, pay later, those type of things are, are all available to you, just like they are to the other municipality.
So, so just, so what is your estimated cost for this equipment for six towers? And how many years will this cover this? I mean, we just done these towers, how many years ago? Nine years ago?
Oh, seventeen.
Well, I'm saying, and we, and we, now we're looking at this, this many millions of dollars, hell, I got buyer's remorse right now. The, the five million years.
I don't, I don't know, again, I, I don't have a, a sheet of paper that explains to me how Lawrence came up with the, the five million a year. As I said, I, I cover from Polk County to Pensacola. I drove three and a half, four hours to get here. I didn't get a lot of context on how he came up to that math, but I've known Lawrence a long time. I was a customer. I worked in Lake County for twenty years managing a large system, twenty sites, six thousand users. I, I know that it costs a lot of money to manage this. Lawrence was doing what Lawrence does. He was taking care of problems this morning. We weren't able to connect on the phone prior to this meeting for me to get much more context, uh, and to be in there. It saddens me that you say you have buyer's remorse.
Well, I, I, I. I weigh down the original decision about these towers, but I know what they spend, and now we're looking at, what, eight years later, nine years later, we're looking at more than what we paid for the towers just to put equipment on the tower.
I, making an investment of one point two million dollars or one point four roughly to, to do as I, you know, reference, kind of like a transmission service on something that's running twenty-four by seven, you're, you're almost devaluing the sum of the, what you have, right? So to me, you made a wise choice because you don't hear a lot about radio. You haven't had to make an investment in the last eight years for the radio system. A lot of municipalities, from the time it goes on the air, they start putting money away because they know at some point they're gonna have to replace it, just like some of you do with building funds, right? The lights come on, on the building, we know we're gonna have to replace this building in a few years, so you start putting money away for the buildings. You know, that didn't happen in this case, but it sound, it, it sounds like there's room for us to have some discussions on how we can help you. And if you're open to that, I would happily foster the dialogue to give you some options. We can talk about whatever, what other people are doing, you know, not necessarily the, the subscription model because that may not be the best fit, but lease purchase, there are people that are doing penny sales tax for public safety. I mean, there's lots of things that we can talk about, and, and I'm happy to sit down with you in any, any way you want to do it to talk through it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, thank you. You did exactly wha- what I expected. We just wanted to open the book, um, with the chair's permission. Uh, if y'all can get a reasonable timeframe together, it would just be my ask of the chair to allow this to be a discussion item at a future meeting before we go much further with our new investment, right? And, um, with the chair's permission, I think he had put that on the agenda, no problem. I would just say, when in thirty days, come back and give us a rare, a very, uh, reasonable approach or alternatives, or whatever that might be, but to give you the proper time to put your proposal together. But in my opinion, Mr. Chair, this is a very significant item for Columbia County moving forward.
And we, we need to, sooner than later, because I, I was here when we negotiated it, uh, a couple of years after Rock got here. And, uh, proprietary was my big hangup back then. And, uh, uh, so with that being said, I think it's, you know, because of the numbers that Lawrence has shared here, uh, I, I'd like that because I, I don't want to be shell-shocked going in too low, so to speak. Don't know, and, you know, and, uh, Lawrence has taught me a lot about this system as a radio over the years I've known him. And, uh, but this is something that we need to approach like now. Because, uh, there's other options out there. We all realize it, and I agree with what you're saying. But, you know, every time we go to Tallahassee, and, uh, I believe them towns are pretty well dried up. You know, first question out of anybody's mouth, well, you know, why have y'all ever, never, you know, even considered slurs? And, uh, and I don't know the pros and the cons of slurs. I, I reached out to my nephew who's FWC and another gentleman that's FWC in Okeechobee. And, uh, you know, I got their opinions, though, to, you know, how, how, how often are you out there without a radio coverage and that kind of stuff? So that's just my orthodox way about trying to talk to people. But anyway, with that being said, I, I agree with Mr. Kirby. Sooner or later, I, I would assume that maybe correspondence, Kevin, you know, you're, you're up to date on the budgetary issues that we face. And then, uh, that's like you said a minute ago, it's a problem all over the state of Florida. We realize that. But yourself, this gentleman and Lawrence, put together, give him some decent direction as what to bring back to us, you know? And, uh, because I would, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think we need to take a reactive step on this pretty quick, irregardless which way we go, because this, this is a big, this is a big dollar amount, you know? Irregardless what we do, I'm sure jumping over slurs ain't gonna, if you were to do that, it's gonna come with a cost too. Everybody realizes that. But the, uh.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, if Lawrence has got all my contact info, if y'all, if you'll give me a holler tomorrow, we'll put a plan together. We'll be back here to sit, y'all.
The consensus of the board? Yeah, good.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Yeah, but I appreciate you coming.
I mean, really, this is a shock.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We know what kind of problems we're having right now. We get your budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to fund everything we have.
And, and, you know, and I'm tickled to death that Lawrence brought it up when he did, and he, Lawrence has got that military way of boom hitting you in the head, you know? And smiling at it when he does it. But that's, I like that because, you know, we've got money from Tallahassee on this tower out here, and we need to make a decision, you know, because today, I'm not putting no more money in that tower until I've got a clear view of where I'm going. Because it looks like there's gonna be other baggage to go along with it, you know? So that's where we're at, you know, so, but I appreciate you taking the time to do what you done.
Thank you for the partnership and the trust in us to date. We hope to continue to do business with you, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cross, I think you've got some outstanding budget issue reports. I guess that's what we'll call it.
So we have a few topics we wanted to cover. Uh, first topic we wanted to cover was some personnel issue. Uh, the first one was veterans administration. We, as part of this budget, would like to make part-time veterans administration officer time. And wanted to make sure there was no objections to that. We also want to do succession planning in some of our key departments. All of those will have budgetary impacts. We think it's important, though, because you will be, as we've mentioned many times, experiencing most of your senior staff retiring in the very near future. There will be budgetary impacts. And also, uh, we wanted to make sure the board was on board with a two percent raise for all county employees.
David, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, board, uh, me and David had a conversation last night, I think at seven thirty or something like that. And I apologize for that late call, but I got hit with something yesterday that was just, uh, I guess it's just way to get a load of work. But this, uh, this, uh, first thing David spoke about, the veterans affair, uh, permanent position. I, for one, did not know that this contract, if you want to say part-time contract's coming up in October or something like that for renewal or whatever. And, uh, but this gentleman, and I'm not gonna use his name, I think it's premature to say that, but the individual, I think, that's, uh, looking at this succession is, uh, what he's done, and, and I talked to him, I, I thought about bringing him in just to get his testimony as what this gentleman has just most recently done for his family when his father, Vietnam vet, has been dead since nineteen ninety-five. It, it was, it was, it was unbelievable what took place. And you gotta figure, somebody done, you know, passed and gone in nineteen ninety-five, and then he, I've asked him to come on one of the, uh, greetings of the budget. I think y'all, uh, y'all, I think you'll be overwhelmed like I was. Uh, it, it's amazing. I mean, you think of somebody that's passed in nineteen ninety-five, they kind of forgot about. But, uh, but th- th- this gentleman is being paid. I mean, this family's gonna be paid big benefits of the sacrifice that this man made. And of course, this old man sitting beside me, I think he just, uh, got some great news from the, uh, Veterans Association. But I, I just wanted to point that out. I, I'm, I, I had this gentleman come out to the radio last year, and he brought a POW. It, it's pretty neat. It, it's, uh, I know veterans is a big pet peeve, Mr. Hollinsworth and all of us for that matter. But, uh, it's, it's good to see your money getting something in return. And, uh, I just, I just need to say that, because I'm sure they're probably listening on this meeting, but.
And for years, you had one veteran sergeant.
Yeah.
And last year, you added a half-time person. He's come on board, and he's done an outstanding job, and we feel it's important to bring him up to full-time.
Well, I'm, I am a vet, and I have most recently been awarded some stuff that I should have gotten a long time ago. And I have talked to this person several times. And I have seen many vets that has come from nothing to have something what they should have gotten years ago. And I don't want to say what I really want to say about the people that are getting the money that shouldn't be getting the money. It should go to people that have served our country, and this man will take care of that.
That's good, that's good.
And it emphasizes our commitment to the veterans, as well as it's very much supported by the American. Any issue with the succession planning or the two percent raise?
No.
Okay, next item is payoff debt, which Mr. Powell already talked about. So we'll just keep going. Uh, that will, we have some money that'll help us balance the budget. Finally, the sheriff's office. Uh, we came up with a number where we feel it works. Uh, and at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Powell, and he'll go over our calculations, so you know exactly how we came up with the number that we did.
Great. Uh, as, as part of the duties of the county budget officer, David asked me if I would review and analyze the budget that the sheriff submitted. I'll first of all say I did not do an audit, procedures, look through, uh, any records of the sheriff's office, but, but rather utilize the information the sheriff submitted in the budget proposal. And three, the salary schedules, uh, given to David by the, the sheriff's financial director. So, uh, a study I did raised some concerns. Uh, and I'll just read them. Number one, in the current year, the current year raises a four hundred and ten thousand, seven eighty-nine. During the current year, the board awarded the sheriff funds in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars to provide three percent raises to sheriff employees. These funds were initially escrowed by the board at the request of the incoming sheriff. The board later increased these funds to one million, one forty-three, three ninety-seven through two budget amendments that hold three seventy-one, seven nine seven. Uh, if used for raises, that would provide for about four point four percent raises. During the current year, sheriff employees overall received raises which averaged eight point three nine percent. This resulted in an approximate unfunded, uh, annual salary liability in the sheriff's office of approximately four hundred and ten thousand, seven eighty-nine. It is probable that these excess raises are being funded in the current year by salary lapse savings from vacant positions, which are aver- averaging approximately a hundred. lapse savings from vacant positions, which are averaging approximately $100,000 per month. Next issue, school resource officers, $282,723. During the new budget year, the sheriff will lose $282,723. Great.
There you go.
Will lose $282,723 in funding from school resource office contracts, which is primarily due to the elimination of the Florida Gateway College contract of 27644. The budget for school resources in the sheriff's office has not been accordingly reduced for this revenue loss. And the concept here is, is, or, over the years, when the SRO funds increased, you always amended those into sheriff. This is a decrease year, so there's no funding for those, so the budget should be reduced. Non-sworn officer excess raises, 179,102. The approximate of 50 civilian-type employees in the sheriff's office are slated to receive raises at average 8.5%.
Thank you, Joe.
With 12 receiving raises and the 10 at the 13% range. Many of the duties of these employees are similar to other county employees who are slated to receive 2% raises. The requested raises in excess of the county 2% rate total 179,102. Salary lapse funds, 100,000 per month. The sheriff's office currently has 18 full-time positions that are vacant. Although this creates increased overtime, there's also a likely budgetary savings from these vacant positions of approximately $100,000 per month. These salary lapse funds have not been clearly accounted for in the sheriff's budget.
Excuse me a minute, Dick, did you just say savings of $100,000 a month?
Okay, if you have 18 employees that aren't, that are funded but aren't being paid, that equates to about 100,000 per month in unspent funds.
And that's with paying the overtime to the unemployed other?
Overtime would come out of that, some overtime.
So what is the difference, do you know?
Can I ask you something before we get too far from it?
Yes.
You told me this year, 8.39% raise, you, you told me how many people got raises, so 10 got 12 to 13% raises, is that what you said?
Correct, yes.
What was the, right before that, how many people got the 8% raise?
Okay, so, I have a detail that shows what.
God, you just read it.
But overall, the sheriff's office in the current year gave 8.39% raises.
Overall, okay, I get it.
And that's excluding the sheriff just employees.
And 10 to 12 had 13% raises.
Okay, so now.
He's averaging it all together.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
In the non-sworn employees, okay, just, okay, under item three, non-sworn employees, we can call them admin employees, but non-sworn employees are slated to get overall 8.5% raises, and of those, of those 50, 12 are getting 10 to 13% raises.
Okay.
That's in the proposed budget, correct?
In the proposed budget.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
In, in the sheriff's documents.
Gotcha, that's what you, that's the fee that you were provided with, gotcha.
Okay, so, and the other thing, there's Excel spreadsheets that add up total personnel services in the budget, and the budget request totals 20,993,092 for personal services. The detailed spreadsheet of salaries totals 21,434,017, a difference of 440,925. There's no explanation for this difference, which basically means that the budget request, if everyone was fully employed, could not support the salaries. And again, that's possibly related to the first thing of the unfunded salary increase. Okay, so now, accountants like schedules, so if you go, you have it up there, okay? Okay, so, so first of all, I tried to kind of summarize the increases in the salary, in, in the requested budget from the sheriff. And so it basically says there's 112 sworn officers who are slated to get 992,772 in raises, averaging 8,864. 50 sworn correctional officers, 437,180, average about the same, 8744. 54 non-sworn employees getting 183,206 in raises, averaging 3393. The FICA retirement health insurance increase, the, the current year unfunded salaries at 410,789, operating expense increase of 503,997. Add that up, that's 3,619,244, very close in the big numbers. The budget increase is 3,584,550. So here are the staff's recommendations, and the, if the sheriff, sheriff absorbs the unfunded, unfunded salaries from the current year, 410,789, reduces the school resource budget by the lost funds, 282,723, makes non-sworn staff raises at 2%, which is the same as county employees, saves 179,102. Calculates law enforcement raises at a flat 7,000, 292,280. Corrections officers at a flat 7,122,052. The reduction is 1286,946. The net revised increase is 2,293,509, which is 2.3. And I'd just like to make one statement, we have reviewed, reviewed this information with the sheriff and his staff. We had a subsequent telephone conversation with sheriff finance director and discussed all of these things. In that conversation, I really had the first number, the salary number incorrect, because I wasn't aware of the budget amendment, that was the only change, and.
But you corrected that, your numbers are correct.
What's giving that information, I correct.
Okay.
Dick, real quick, not to cut you off, Robbie, but explain the, because I think it may go on the code of signs, what I think Robbie's gonna ask here, explain the budget amendments that you're alluding to, if you would, please.
Okay, so I remember one was because some SRO funding was increased and not given to the sheriff, so that was maybe half to 300 and something. Do you recall what the other one was, my mistake? No, offhand, it was some other money that was found to help the sheriff.
I remember, I, I remember the, the one you're talking about there, but, but I remember the discussion here at the floor, and I remember when it took place, I just.
So, and, and another thing is, I wanna make sure people understand that the 282, I think it was a 282, 228, something like that, you adjusted that back as a plus to the sheriff because they are not, they are not doing college work anymore?
Yeah, but correct, the concept is, is that whenever SRO money went up, you increased the budget.
Yeah.
It went down, so you didn't have any funds, other funds to do that.
Yeah.
So it's assumed that the sheriff would, they're not doing the work, the sheriff would reduce the staffing.
Reduce the staffing because they're not having to go to the college anymore?
And there are 18.
Or summer school. Right, so that frees up some money, correct?
Yeah, that frees up.
The 200.
Well, if you have 18 open positions.
Freezes up some, it's hard to tell what, what's your freeze up.
So basically, what happened is, the sheriff, not this year, decided to respond to the calls of the college from people in the field rather than having people stationed.
Okay. So David, the, the SRO officers, they have less of them because the school board closed summer schools and combined summer schools, is that?
Right, and the number we got on the SROs came directly from.
So, but the SRO.
So that was a savings, okay.
SRO is fully funded by the school system, correct?
No.
It's not?
No, that's what we.
Okay.
Remember, we went up last year.
Okay, well, and you're right, I remember that now that you say that, but now, as part of the, I don't wanna say that, the Safe Schools Act or something like that, has none of that come to us?
We have listed in the budget all the money we get, we don't get.
So basically, all of the money comes to the general fund.
I see. Okay, so no part whatsoever, if I'm understanding what you're saying, Dick, is funded by the school board as far as for the?
No, we have a revenue.
Okay.
That we have in the general fund for SROs.
Okay.
Because it's not fully funded, so.
But over the years, sheriff's budget has been trusted considering the SRO.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, so I wanna get this number right. Just north of $7,000 will go to every sworn officer, and just north of $7,000 will go to every jailer or, or, or correction officer.
If you have a gun, you will get $7,000.
In other words, well, they don't all have guns, but yeah, but what I'm saying is, so you have funded with your, with your plan, $7,000 for every deputy and every officer that works as a correction officer in Columbia County, in, at, at the Columbia County Sheriff's Office. So including unfunded position that haven't even hired yet.
That's what I was fixing to ask, Dick.
Okay, so if they hire somebody in the next week, they will still be hired at the newer rate of $7,000? More, more, right. Okay, well, whatever.
Yeah, it would raise the minimum salary.
So we made sure we took care of future officers, that, that come, that come in if there's some jail staff that haven't been married or, or, or not married, haven't been funded.
So what about to, is the sheriff has open positions right now?
Right, right.
And when he fills those positions.
This'll fund.
He will have the money to fund them at the rate.
At the new rate that we're, we're trying to get him, at the 7,000 extra.
So if you remember, we always ran into the problem, this board would say, we will fund 3%, 4% across the board. The sheriff would say, well, I've got a pay plan, I'm gonna stick it into my pay plan, and I'm gonna pay something different. And we're not going in and reducing anybody's salary, we're saying, whatever your salary is today, October 1, you're gonna get $7,000.
Doesn't matter what you make, you're getting $7,000, and I like that.
But keep in mind, hold on, keep in mind.
Go ahead.
Once we write this check to the sheriff, he does not have to follow our schedule.
I know.
He could, he could do what he wants to.
Just a recommendation by staff.
But this is saying we fund, we have enough money here to fund this.
Thank you, Robbie. Yeah, I, I, I'm glad you made that point.
And that's, that's all, that's even starting money, so, okay.
So this is increasing the sheriff's budget roughly 2.3 million dollars.
Okay, and I wanted to ask one more question. Have you ever seen a sheriff's budget increase this much? Because we, we needed to do this, you know, because, have you ever seen a budget increased in the county, anywhere in the county this much, like, like?
Road, you know.
I feel obligated to make sure everybody hears this straight. The way I interpret this, Mr. Powell, correct me if I'm wrong, for 2.3 million dollars, the sheriff will have the ability, if he so chooses, to give all sworn officers on the road and at the jail, $7,000 apiece, and all unsworn personnel, 2%. He will be afforded the opportunity to do that if he so chooses.
Okay.
Just want to make sure paper got that right.
Well, we can't tell the sheriff what to do, so.
And that is correct, and we feel we can balance the budget at that.
Okay.
I love $7,000 for all the officers. If, if. I just wanna say this, Sheriff, I want everybody to keep in mind too, we really have this same problem. Kevin's got people quitting every day, we got people quitting every day, because they can go make more money in private business. And I know we provide F R S, but at the same time, you can't go buy groceries for the F R S right now. And a lot of these young employees, they need money, they don't, they're not looking at retirement, they need money, I understand that. So we're stuck with an overworkforce, really because of that, because some of the older employees, when they come hiring to the county, they're looking for insurance, and they're looking for security right now more than money, but this is something we're gonna have to address at some point on our side too.
Yeah, well, to me, we have just given, gotten these officers up, if, if it's all done, to 54,000, which I think was the, was the plan, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate so much the, the openness that Wally has shown with us, and, and next year, I can see us maybe talking about something for the road department, just to be.
Not just the road department.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about countywide.
We're trying to hire, we're trying to hire a, a.
Planning person.
Planning person right now.
Right.
And for what we're offering, they're laughing at us.
Yeah.
I mean, I heard the sheriff say that, they, the parolee laughed at him when he tried to hire him, but we've got the same piece thing going on with us, you know, it's just.
It's, 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 it's all over the place, but I'm just glad we're getting these guys up, and then we need to work on our own, our own house.
Kevin?
I feel obligated to inform this board that I did talk with the sheriff about 11 o'clock today, and he is not satisfied with that number. He is not satisfied with the 2.3. As Mr. Kraus indicated, on our side of things, we can make the budget balance overall, and it did afford sheriff the opportunity to, as we just discussed, but I do feel obligated that sheriff is not satisfied with the 2.3. His minimum ask is 2.6.
2.6?
Yes.
So he wants 300, basically 300 more times?
Yes, sir.
What he's asking for?
Yes, sir.
Now, does this 2 point, does this money that we, you got it here right now, 2.93, 509, does that include the new money that Tallahassee has given the sheriff? That is in there, okay.
So Dick and I were just talking about it, roughly $300,000 is the SRO money. In other words, when he lost the money, he kept the people, they're just not doing SRO.
Can he move those to road deputies?
They are road deputies.
They are road deputies.
Yes.
So, so what you're saying is that the, the SRO positions that are no longer needed add up to about 300,000? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, so it's kind of a collapsing track. Every year, sheriff's budget will, one component is rest already.
Right, 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 right.
Every year, there's been like full increase, but in this year, there was 130,000, I would decrease. So it, it, it keeps the difference from sheriff budget.
And that, and that, are you saying that would kind of make it from 2.6 to 3? Is that what, is that what you're bridging the gap with?
That's roughly the difference, yeah.
Okay.
So what happens is the college canceled their contract. College said, I'm not happy, we're gonna cancel our contract.
Okay.
That was 300,000, a little bit less than 300,000.
Go ahead.
If we have a question, every issue that Friday, one was.
Right.
But.
So the 300 was not discussed about the SRO, so I hope they look at that, you know?
So how many SRO college positions were there, three?
It'd be three.
But there were, evidently. They have an SRO department, dedication, got a contract for SRO with college.
Correct.
That's bad.
So for lack of better words, you had 18 openings, then the college canceled the contract, and they just put the, them over here but didn't dilute the 18 openings, correct?
Well, in all fairness to this sheriff.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Prior sheriff was the one who changed.
And I think that, am I wrong, David, that, that contract was diluted with the prior sheriff, is that correct?
Yes. So I'm not trying to cast aspersions.
Understand.
The prior sheriff felt he would cover the college from the road deputies, did not want to assign specific deputies to the college.
But then three still came into the equation, and then three slots, like Kevin's got empty positions and.
Right.
Cleanse those and what have you, they, they never went nowhere, there's still that number there.
Correct.
Three employees, three employees, yeah, yeah.
I understand. I mean, there's your dollar right there.
That's your 300 difference. Hey, $7,000 sounds wonderful to me.
Well, it's more than we've given anybody else ever. Don't get me wrong. We're not, we don't have it.
Well, and you're right. That's a good point.
You know, I've had this conversation with a couple people. You know, you could spend every dollar we got.
Other way.
On the sheriff's office, and probably it would be money well spent. But at the end of the day, you've only got so much money. And you've got to fund all the, you've got courts, you've got all the other departments we have to fund.
And, and if you.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a hard job. I mean, it's, and everybody's not gonna get what they want. I just.
And even, even about a year ago, well, a year ago, the 4% a year, I remember you saying that was almost unmanageable for years to come. And, and you know, we've doubled the sheriff's budget. Isn't that right, Mr. Kirby?
That's right.
The sheriff's budget has doubled since 2008 to 2024, doubled. And I think the county road department budget went up about 30%, and I don't know about other budgets. I don't know about the other budgets, but. Law enforcement, law enforcement is tough, you know.
The management team does need a consensus or direction. We're trying to balance the budget. So today, we got 2.3 building there with a balanced budget, for lack of a better word. So if the board chooses to change that number, in my opinion, our opinion, we need a consensus because we're getting on down to the line.
Yeah.
Cleaning up the book.
So if you change that number, we're gonna have to go back and start cutting.
Right.
Correct, correct.
David, I told you, I told you the meeting, maybe the last meeting, I don't remember, last couple meetings. Look, at the end of the day, you've got to present a balanced budget.
Yep.
And whatever you, I'm sure you and Dick, I know you and Dick, and maybe Kevin too, some. Y'all been working on this every day, just about for the last two weeks. And I know y'all put the pencil every way you could figure it. And I'm just glad to say, whatever y'all, you've got, you've got to have a balanced budget. And that's where we're at. I mean, it's just as simple as that. That's where we're at.
We have to be able to publish a balanced budget by Friday of next week. So that it's in your agenda packet for the first public.
I mean, we had insurance increase. We had everything's increased, you know?
That's right. That's right.
And I'm okay if, 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 if everybody wants to have more money, the way to do it is consolidation. I mean, you know, we're, I'm just telling y'all, the way to do it is consolidation. We've got a, we've got an IT department. We've got an HR department. I don't know why you couldn't, you're not, that HR department and that IT department to cover the sheriff's office, too. I mean.
Right here in this community, what Mr. Ford's saying, there's so much redundancy.
Yeah.
He is very valid point.
And I think we could do something, economic, ballot, and tourist, tourist, too. And they've got to kind of work together with all. Everybody's got to work together. And if they want to find it, there's ways to save money, but everybody's got to agree to do it, you know?
But you know, Mr. Ford, that, that very well could spark some really needed conversation in this next 12 months.
Yeah, yeah, and it is.
This conversation that we're having here, y'all, I mean, I've talked to Lake County, this, this is a conversation everybody in the state's having. You know, the, the problems that the state of Florida have created upon law enforcement, that's out of our, our control. There's nothing we can do with that.
I mean, look, for example, I said in a conversation yesterday, October 1st of this year, the state is doing away with sales tax on commercial rental property and commercial leases.
That's right.
Well, I talked to David about that. We lost $600,000 this year.
There you go.
Because of that.
That's right. That's right.
So, you know, it's, yeah.
And you know, that's why you see these other counties and, and people start talking about public service, public service or public safety tax. You look at the sales tax, the half cent sales tax that the schools got put on. Now, this is all stuff you would put on the ballot and the people would vote on. Yes, we don't mind doing it. And just like the one with the, the schools, the schools are building out here. They did that with a half cent sales tax, you know, because they ran out of money, you know, the school system.
I mean, but just think about how much money that is. Sales tax for, well, some counties, it's 5%, some counties, it's 10%. But on every commercial rental and lease in Florida.
And they just took it. And I'm gonna be honest with y'all, the state's gonna keep taking.
That's right.
They're gonna take every, every year, they're gonna take money from us.
Well, I said this, go ahead, I'm sorry, Robert.
No, until they don't want money. I don't know what.
I mean, I said it, you know, eight and a half years ago, it was, it was everything about county commissioners or boots on the ground. And myself and Rocky, we testified over there on something silly as term limits. But my point is, is that, you know, home rule, that's all gone over there. It's, it's nothing but preemptive. And, you know, and, I mean, we're, we're not even into the fiscal beginning of the year, and they're already talking about what's gonna happen with this homestead thing. Nobody in this room has got a clue.
I see, I, I really see in the future that there either won't be county commissioners or county commissioners will just do what the state tells them to do on paving, on culverts, on everything. I mean, I really believe that if it keeps going the way it's going, county commissioners are probably not gonna have to have term limits because you're, you're not, you know what I mean? You're not gonna have any, any power to help anybody or any, any way to.
I can see they're moving toward one unified government.
Right. In other words, in other words, somebody in there close up there in the governor's office will decide how many roads we can pave. And they, they do now to a point. But I mean, one day, it will be preemption completely, you know?
Yep.
So.
Well, as far as consensus wise goes, I think Mr. Ford definitely, just for the record, but clarity, I think Mr. Ford stated his point. I'm, I'm with Mr. Ford, uh, board. Is everybody's consensus good with the 2.3 going forward?
Yeah, and the 7,000 also, I'm happy with that.
Good?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
You previously talked about an MSTU for law enforcement. We did research it. It is possible. There are, I think it was 10, the 67 counties have an MSTU for law enforcement.
I really think that should be part of our discussion this year.
Good.
You could not do a sales tax without getting the approval of the legislature. However, you can do sales tax for public safety, for fire, or those types of things, or for communication.
The only way, the only way I'm, I would give my permission for taxes to, or I would support taxes if the people voted to give us the money. If it was voted for. I'm not gonna raise taxes.
Well, you wouldn't raise taxes, though, on MSTU. The way they do the math is all the services provided by the county, that would still be funded by us. But other. David, you might, you can, you can say a lot better than I can. But basically, he would set, he would set the millage rate for what he needed, the sheriff for.
The sheriff.
Okay. And you would cut your millage rate some, what you need.
Too offset.
I'm just not for raising taxes.
So your courts, your jail, those would all still have to be funded through the general fund.
Right.
It's your road deputies and those types of special task force.
And, and, and even if you didn't, I, I don't know that people wouldn't vote for, for something like that, you know, if you did it that way. If you did it like the schools did.
While they would vote then.
Some kind of show stuff.
Set the millage rate for his department like we set the millage rate for the county.
Right.
But they elect sheriff. You see what I'm saying? So, you know.
But you would still have to vote it. Because only you have the ability to vote it.
Right. But you would be raising taxes. You would be keeping taxes the same.
Right.
Actually lowering taxes because you'd cut out the millage rate, whatever you're funding the sheriff at this time for that part of it.
Right.
And then if he needed more money, whatever more money, it would be up to him to set the millage rate for what he needed.
That's right.
Long as I'm not raising taxes, I'm good.
The next thing is.
That's all pretty talk. That's all pretty talk. Long as I ain't raising taxes, I'm good.
Well, if you don't do something, one day you'll have to.
Yeah.
So the next thing is, we gave you a fire assessment and solid waste assessment several months back, or a month back. This board's always had a philosophy. Don't adopt the maximum, do it incrementally, so nobody's hit with a large bill at one time. Well, next week, you're gonna be voting, or the next meeting, you're gonna be voting on the solid waste and the fire assessment. Uh, there is a typo here in that the solid waste that we would be proposing would be 21009. We're currently at 19806, I think that's it.
What went out on the trim?
339.
339, right, yeah. I've been getting calls about it. I don't know, you got.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, that's Lakeway County. They sent their mail to us, and we sent ours then.
I don't know why they send those things out like that.
Required to put the maximum you could adopt. We've never adopted.
Right. And, and the problem is, that's sent out that way, and that looks like what we're gonna charge them. And I don't like that. I don't know why they don't change that. Because people, I don't blame people. Look at that and go, what?
They do a study, and that's what the study.
Right, that's right. That ain't our study, so.
But, but, but we, we already have. We spread it out over that time. But poor old Jeff, and then, you know, people just go, oh, dang, look at that, 198. They're blaming Jeff and them, and Jeff's got the easy, I mean, that's no increased amount to anything, come on. But I'm like, no, 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 that ain't the fire. I had to go get mine and look at it. I was like, oh, boy, this ain't right.
So I guess the question is, going from, what is it, 298 to 210, is that a consensus the board would be?
Wait a minute.
Considered?
198 to 210.
198 to 210.
198 to 210. That, that's.
Basically, you're writing the $12.
Yeah.
A year.
No objections? So we'll proceed with that in the budget and in the plan for.
Jamie, make sure that's in big black letters, okay? When you do that, Mark.
339 is what they want us to charge, but we're not charging that. I wish they would say that on those.
So then there's the fire assessment. It's right now at 317. We're suggesting, or no, it's right now at 2, sorry.
293.
293.
293, or the report suggested, and we could recommend 31766. Obviously, you can set it where you need to. Question is, is that an increase that's within what your policy is or not?
So we're at now, we're charging 29398?
For an individual.
And we're pretty heavy.
And you're talking about going up basically $20. A year.
That would be the recommendation.
And what did we do last year?
I think we went up 10 or 12.
I think, I think you do it increments, 10, 12.
Is that what it was, yes?
And you can do the same this year if that's what the board chooses to do. We just need to know what direction you want us to go.
And I remember we did not go up correctly, if I'm wrong, last year, the full request, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
We never hit that maximum.
I say we go $10.
I'd say we go what we did last year.
Yeah, what we did last year, and people can expect that, you know?
Okay.
To me.
That would be, that's.
$12.
So the next issue is the insurance. We have talked to FMIT Act, and they did give us a proposal, and now Pickett is trying to come up with a number to compete with them that will save us approximately $400,000. And with that, I think Mr. Wheeler, is he still here?
Thank you. Work to do for the county. Um, back during the summer, we began an informal process of review of coverages that you currently have. We represent you currently for your fact of board liability, errors of conditions, civil liability, general liability. I talk with y'all from time to time when a constituent calls. We do the field work for you, the investigation, and for your local agent for that program. Been doing that for years, years. The thought is, is to broaden that, to include more of the coverage that you purchase, your property insurance, your commercial law fleet, auto, workers' comp, uh, and do the same thing that we do for your liability for that. Loss control, training, claims, work, et cetera. Uh, the total savings that you can achieve is actually more than $40,000, I think it's 580, to be exact, about 43%.
That's right.
Not because there's any magic out there, but market conditions are good, right? And the thing that you can be proud of your staff for is the claims experience. Your teams have been doing good. You keep good records within your departments. So it allows us to keep your claim frequency and severity. So that has a resulted price. So the big picture is, um, increase your costs, and at the same time, increase your service level and local representation. And you can also, um, increase your coverage. There's areas in that informal review that we did that you may want to shift some coverage. You may want to shift some coverages, some small coverages you're not using now, and put them into things that are more mission critical. For example, um, found that the building coverage, or house in the annex are under insured by, by quite a bit. So it's something.
In addition, they provide the additional services, just like Brown and Brown and Pickett does, in terms of attorneys and assistants, things that they can do to help you manage your program better. Unless there's any objection, we plan to, uh, go out and fully investigate what is our best insurance option.
It's my understanding, niece was working with y'all on this, with fact and what have you. Yeah, good. I'm the chair, I, I represent the county, not the chair, on the consortium, and this is a big discussion that's been taking place this year. It's, it's, it makes a difference on the record-keeping aspect of it. It really does. From what I've learned, my years of sitting over there on that consortium, so, uh, absolutely. I mean, you talk of half a million dollar savings. Kerry shared some of these numbers with me yesterday. It was pretty impressive, so I'm, I'm excited about it.
No objections?
No objection from me.
You will go with the best option for the county, obviously, for renewal.
And I trust Mr. Wheeler. He's looking out for our best interest every day. Me and Steven does need to get him to help us out here at that fairground, don't we, Steven? How to get you there, it's fine. We appreciate what you do.
So then the next item is the outside agencies that you heard the presentations from. Specifically, we want to talk about the sports agents and the sports leagues. Right now, we have a situation where we have placed our finance director in a situation where she has to make judgment calls on what's eligible and not eligible expenditure. We would like to draft a policy if it meets the interest of the board, and we want to understand the board's intent for how those tax powers should be used by these sports leagues. So for instance, we sat down with the plant, Amy, and went through it. We feel like equipment, like soccer nets and goals and things like that, that's perfectly a good expense. Liability insurance, good expense. Facility rental, equipment rental, if it's for the sake of actually operating the league, officiating, we felt the first time you stocked the concession stands, we could pay for it. But after that, you're using the resources, you're generating the money, you should pay for the concession stand stocking. Tournament registration fees, we would not cover. We would expect you to use those tournament registrations. Rare occasion. We'd expect if you're doing tournaments and doing registrations, those registrations should cover things like uniforms, trophies, all those ongoing expenses, um, and then just general operating fees. We'd like to put all the money in a single fund. And so that way, if somebody has an eligible expense, they come to us and we pay it, rather than saying you will get X amount of dollars every year. We are basing that fund on arbitrarily $5,000 a league. Because we have leagues that request money every year and they never file for it. We have some leagues that cost a lot more than other leagues. And we just feel this gives you more control, that you know where those monies are being spent. And if this is something the board would like us to pursue, we will draft it up as a policy and bring it back for formal adoption.
I think your assumption should have been done.
20 years, best.
So if the maximum amount you give any agency in the sports league is $5,000, you will cut your costs by $50,000. And then the last thing, um.
David, if I may, real quick, I just had a brain thought here. Why y'all are investigating or working with this? I personally would ask that we come up with some type of basis policy for the community centers also. With that being said, the reason I say that is this. Tammy and Em are doing much, much better job over, you know, at the Richardson Community Center, but that separation needs to take place. And I guess what I'm asking, you know, the taxpayers have went forth and furnished these facilities in overwhelming matter over the last 40 years, probably. And so facilities are. And so facilities are provided and, but. We all know, and I, I, me and Amy's had this conversation a hundred times, there's a. It causes them not to do, their books are very inadequate. We just spoke about accurate bookkeeping and what have you. But I think they need guidance as to what they can spend their money on too. And my point is this, they're generating their monies by basically rentals. That, and then they got a free run of how you spend the money. I'm not saying anybody's out there abusing the point, but I think. If they have better direction, they can make better decisions upon themselves. They're not condemned within their organization. And then when we hear some over the years, you know, I've heard a couple things a little out there. And we, we are not in a condemning position neither. So, uh, I just, uh. I'm not trying to put more work on them, but when you see these papers come in and Amy's sitting there trying to decipher it. It's, it's quite overwhelming, you know? I mean, it's for me and I'm just, I'm just looking at it. She's dealing with it, you know? So I'm like Mr. Ford, I think this should have been done, but I, you, you know, cause it's gonna come back to us for final review, I would assume. So I, I would, I think it's, I think it's proper time. Let's not leave that on the back. Let's go ahead and this way, we know the direction and then I think it's gonna open up the gates. When you get to talk about Richardson here in a minute, uh, you know, what we provide on recreation side, it's, it's, it's gonna give them an opportunity to. Really evaluate and use their dollars more frequently. You're gonna see our support on the dollar figure go down, so I appreciate it. Yes.
Um, there's another thing that somebody brought up to me that's kind of a lawyer type, that does five oh one C three investigations and. And we need to, I don't know how we audit them or how we find out, but we have these five oh one C threes we have. That we fund and, you know, I'm sure that y'all know all of them. I guess, is there somewhere to make sure that they're doing everything they're supposed to and that they're a legal entity? Is that tough to do? Because I feel like there's a liability there if they're not. And I mean, I just had somebody call me that has a five oh one C three and they told me there were some in the county that might not be operating correctly.
So there's, there's two components to having that status. Number one is you have to be a Florida not-for-profit corporation, so that's how you're filed. That's just sun dis. You go in, you type it up. So you can always see if they're active as a Florida not-for-profit. The status with the IRS is something you ask for, okay? And the IRS will tell you that you. We can ask them to show us their letter. We can also ask to see their annual tax returns, right? So even though I'm a tax exempt entity, I, I need to let the IRS know that I'm tax exempt, right? So we, we just need to add that into the audits. Really not as hard as it sounds to be one.
And in the past, we had agencies that let their status.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the thing is, I don't wanna give money to those places. Uh, you know, we, they gotta be right. If we gotta be right, they gotta be right. It's taxpayers' dollars.
Agreed. I've had the same people call me up and say, hey, they had filed a tax form.
We're not doing that. No more.
At the end of the day, we wanna make it so simple that it's literally, you check the boxes.
That's right.
Box isn't checked, you don't get the money.
That's right. And that consistency in that is gonna be the success to this story because, you know, I just gotta share, you know, you see a nine ninety out there, which is online, public review. And they've generated, I'm just gonna say, two hundred thousand dollars. But you're still funding this organization, so, but there's no record. I, I can't tell the taxpayer to call me up, well, they made, you know, that girl's nine ninety. I made a hundred ninety thousand. Why, why you giving me a hundred fifty? You know, you, you see what I'm saying? Because there's no validation as to how that, that money gets spent. So, uh, I, I, I'm like taxpayer. I got, I got it, I got issue with that.
Yeah, going forward, I don't want one tax dollar to go to any entity that's not completely and fully legal.
And we really do think the excess money they generate, they should put back in.
So if, if I can speak to another issue, Commissioner Hollisworth, you're excellent. So there's a prohibition on using public money for private purposes. The way we justify giving this money to these entities is, well, if you've got that status and you're truly not-for-profit. Tell us what public services you're providing. I thought it was interesting when you had the last workshop. Uh, senior services. You know, we do provide all these services to the general public. We do these things that otherwise you'd have to do. And we use your money as matching funds for local support to go out and get other public funding. So what it's doing is it's creating that constellation of evidence, cause you have to be able to articulate a public purpose. Doesn't have to be perfect, but you need to be able to articulate it. If I come in here and I don't have my not-for-profit status and I'm not demonstrating my service to the public. And I ask you for money and you give it to them, right? Without me having gotten over that public purpose threshold. The clerk is within his rights to just not sign the check.
And I mean, this, this, doesn't this happen with some of the sports leagues? I mean, we have sports leagues that do this too, so.
It, it can absolutely happen, right? So we talk about recreation from the rec ball standpoint, you know? Any kid who wants to can come and, you know, it's regulated and subsidized and all that kinda stuff we can do. But then when you start saying, well, we're gonna take a for-profit travel ball team, for example, and we're gonna do the same thing. Well, are you really though? Because that's sort of a closed environment. That's like more like a private club where rec ball's open to the general public. So we're always having to navigate these things and the way we kinda put up guardrails is with that five oh one C three requirement. So I completely think the board's on the right track here. Let's make sure what little we're asking them to do, they're actually doing.
That's right.
And we're really not talking about the Meridians or the Senior Services Center. We're talking about those parent run organizations that come in and out of business on a regular.
That money just, money just disappears and they're not.
You know, suddenly they're no longer there and there's a new board that comes in, they don't have the experience. We've run into that several times where a new board comes in and they have no idea where the money went.
And the good thing about this is, David, with, with a, a, a clear path of direction. They can establish their bylaws to coincide with that. Because, you know, you, you'll hear that defense, well, that's all our bylaws say. And it is not, but it's, it's a, it's an avenue to be able to do what they want to with that point, you know?
And we're still gonna keep the approach of you have to present us with a valid expenditure before we give you the.
So the funds are going into a general fund account, as I said earlier, and we're not gonna be like writing. A check to them. It's gonna go into a general fund and we disperse it? Is that what I understand?
Finally, ultimately, when they came and give us a receipt, we'll write them a check.
Okay, for what they need.
Being spent the way that the.
So the maximum check they will receive is five thousand dollars. They have to show all their, all the credentials that they were, they've checked all the blocks to get that money.
And again, this is, was originally intended just for the sports leagues. We'll look at the community centers as well. It's not for the Meridians, it's not for senior service, services or CARC, it's not for your special events.
Why wouldn't we do it for a CARC and senior services? I mean, just, I'm just asking.
That would be a board decision. That was not our intent when we were looking at this, because they tend to be. More professional in terms of having their books in place. You can see where they spent the money, you know how they used it. It's not this.
Sports leagues are like throwing money, you know, you don't, they have parents doing it or whoever.
There's been no, there's been a rare record of something happening outside of sports event, but they still can happen at any place. So if, if we're building a standard, let's make it for everybody. That way we're not, uh, seeming like we're penalizing sporting events. If we do it for everybody, set a standard for everybody, then everybody should be clear. Serve a checkbook. You come in, you, you have quarterly updates, things like that.
Would be for any five oh one C three.
Yeah, not just the sporting and community centers, but everybody, cause we're, we're doing it for one entity, but we're not doing it for. The senior center services or the CARC. We're only doing it for sporting events, so it's almost like we're singling them out. You see what I'm saying? So if we.
Because that's where our issues have been, you know?
So what we see now today is they'll come in and they will use the money on things that we don't believe the board really intended that money to be used. We don't see that with big organizations.
Yeah, state, big organizations, they, they got their lawful, they know, they got, they're held to a higher standard. Whereas, you know, sports leagues, there's, there's so many people handling the money.
And it's like, do you want your staff spending all their time going over, well, we bought these jerseys. We could have used our registration fees, but we didn't. We bought, we used your money instead. But, you know, whatever the board wants to do, that's.
But, but now, let, let's, just to make sure it's clear, because I just, you know, I just wanna make sure we're understanding. Because there's a lot of five oh one C, Meridian, CARC, uh, uh, the, uh. Help me out, the senior services thing over here, these are required contributions in. Their result for them to entitled to go get federal and other state dollars. But the other unique thing about it is each and every one of these entities that will give a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, seventy-five. They're required to give a forensic audit each and every year that, uh. That, that guarantee you can go and, and I'll just go back as far as we all remember the, uh, fiasco of, uh. Eagles on the wings. So my point is, I hate to just beat up on that group, but you know, I gotta say it like it is. Because the Meridians and, and the CARC's and the, they're, they're, we, we get, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave. We get their audit each and every year, proving that, because they've got a balance out to go zero at the end of the. They don't get this slush fund, so to speak. So with that being said, you know, they got requirements from people a lot stronger than us that. It just, but it's, you know, it's for that elderly group, and no more than the veterans thing that we just did right here, you know? Uh, of course, we're under control of that, so that's, that's a deal there. I see where, uh, uh. What Mr. Parnell's point is, is direct, but it's these, uh, and he's accurate. But my point is, is that it, it does look like we're kinda penalizing the, the youth leagues, but. Over the twenty-five, thirty years I've been involved with the youth leagues, you know, that's where the abuse is. And, and I just, I hate to keep beating up on Eagles on the wings, but when they come in there at that podium right there, that first year. Well, you know, okay, we'll give it a try. Okay, but I'll give you a try one year, but bring me back an audit. Well, we can't afford an audit, you know? So, and of course, a soccer league or, uh, uh, baseball, whatever, they can't afford a ten thousand dollar a year audit neither. I, I totally get that, but the, uh, but I, I think with this structure, cause I had a lot of conversation this week with Chris Karadon. Which is doing a great job over there at the Richardson, I call it the rec center. This, in my opinion, is gonna bring more funds into his, to where he can expand his services. You know, with the straight direction from the community center over there, it's, that's a weird deal there. Because you got two entities under the same roof. But with them having the, the, the same direction at that community centers, you got West Side, uh, Winfield, you know. Down there, uh, close wherever it lives. The, the cool thing about it is, is they all get to spend their money, you know, to that direction, but, uh. It's gonna benefit everybody, no doubt, in the long run, myself.
And the other thing is, if you look at your list of money we gave out last year. Some sports leagues got twelve thousand, some got seven thousand, some got four thousand. Uh, football got thirty-seven thousand. Um, there's no consistency. It's not based on anything.
I didn't realize the other entities got audited, so that. Yeah, yeah, the bigger entities, you know, they get, they get hammered, so.
When I say sports, I'm thinking about like riding clubs, stuff like that. That's what I'm looking at. I'm, I'm looking at.
And whatever we do, we have to bring back to you. So you would have to adopt it as a policy.
Yeah, and we can tweak it at that point or whatever.
That, my last item is next month's meeting on September fourth, public hearing. Uh, the nice way to put this is, we were told, uh, this room will be busy. We've already advertised for our hearing. We are going to have it here on the campus, just in a different room. So we'll be meeting in a different room. We won't be meeting in this particular.
And that's when, David?
That's September fourth.
Okay, that's, and just for the record, you'll be, you'll be in here. I will be out of the state, so I said that early on. You handle it, Slade.
Where the room is. School board has given us a room that's adequate for our needs. The ads are good. They said this address, the school board complex, it's still a school board complex.
I think we need to start, one thing else I wanna say is, we really, you know, it's become evident to me in the last few months. That we're gonna have to have an absence, uh, policy on the commissioner. On the chairman of the board.
You can talk, take that out of my comp, Tom. We're working Robbie's bell on the mouth.
I'll sit there and listen. Tell me, I'm thinking, I've got some schedule for that day too. I'm gonna be out of state. Yeah, really.
Yeah, it's the first Thursday of the month. It's a night meeting because it has to be by law.
Rocky, as long as they got three and they don't change their mind in between now and then, we, we, we'll just put a bounty on them if they change, they slips up by us, okay?
First Thursday of the month, September fourth. I thought you said twelve. Oh, I misunderstood you then. I'm thinking.
Although we can schedule one.
I heard the twelve from somebody.
Okay, uh. Open public comments. Anybody here to speak any interest? Okay, staff comments? I think y'all staffed out.
Yes, sir.
You'll see us tonight.
Oh, yeah. That, tonight is right around the corner. Commissioners, anything else?
I'm worn out already.
Scott, thank you for coming.